Turn my microphone on. I'll call the September 22, 2015 study session in Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Duffield has an excused absence.
Okay, first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
None.
Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
None.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
None.
And I have none. So we'll move on to item number two. This is the Orange County Community Paramedicine Pilot Project.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as Kathy Ord steps up to give this presentation, I wanted to make an apology and a clarification. There are many aspects of community paramedicine, and in my insider's guide, as well as in the summary that's on your sheet, I focused on one aspect of it involving more personalized care to people who are not in the hospital. Kathy is going to tell you about a pilot project that focuses more on alternative destinations. So if someone, if our paramedics roll and put someone in the paramedic, in the ambulance, they have an opportunity to say, to go to another place which may not be the emergency room. So I want to apologize for that miscommunication. I need to ask more questions earlier. So with that, I'd like to turn that over to Kathy Ord, our Division Director for EMS.
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Kathy Ord, and I'm the EMS Division Chief for the Fire Department. So my goal today is to explain to you what community paramedicine is. Some people are confused when they hear "paramedicine" because they think it's what we currently have and what we currently staff in the Fire Department. But it is a totally new role. So it's community paramedicine, and I also hope to explain to you a little bit about the pilot project that we are going to be participating in. So, community paramedicine, like the name infers, it's community-based. It's a new model of healthcare that utilizes paramedics with expanded or advanced training. And the whole purpose is to fill the gaps in healthcare needs that are specifically identified within that community. So it's broadly, the term is broadly used, community paramedicine, but with probably in the last five years, another term has come up, and it's called "mobile integrated healthcare." But they're basically talking about the same thing. So why do we need it, to begin with? So you look at this graph, and if you can't read all of the different countries that are off to the side there in the legend, the orange or the highest graph there, and the graph is actually in the United States. So the health expenditures per capita is skyrocketed, and this is within the last 10 years that we've been experiencing this. So in 2010, at the federal level, what happened, and everybody's aware of this, the Affordable Care Act came into play. The whole goal with this was to restructure and retool healthcare with the objective of the AAA. So the whole thing was, we need to improve the quality of care. We got to do it, and make sure that patients are happy with that care, and it's all got to be at reduced costs. So part of this, they actually named gatekeepers. They're called accountable care organizations, and their whole purpose was to monitor and track the efficiencies of the different healthcare entities that were out there. So in this act, there's actually some built-in incentives and penalties. So to just give you an example, because this bill was actually 1,000 pages, but just to give you an example, hospitals can actually get penalized if they discharge a patient, and that patient actually has to be readmitted within 30 days. So some of this, this is just a little piece of it, but this is what's driving the need to change healthcare. And because of this, these changes, there are some hospitals, they have predicted in California, as well as throughout the country, that are not going to be able to meet these standards, and they're simply going to close. So that's what actually we've been seeing in the last five years, since the Affordable Care Act has been put into place. We have hospitals that are actually closing. So what's, that's at the national level. So what's happening at the state level? So healthcare, EMS is actually considered healthcare. They're not just, we're not just a means of transport to a hospital. We do provide healthcare. So there is a need to actually change EMS as well, and to find more efficient ways of providing that service. So what's driving it in California specifically is the widening gap. So there's a demand for healthcare services, but the supply of healthcare workers is diminishing. So there's a lot of different reasons for that. The Affordable Care Act in itself is allowing more people to actually be insured, so that's bringing more people into needing to be, receive care. The healthcare workforce itself is shrinking. We have aging population. We also have aging physicians. So a third of our physicians are actually 60 years and/or older. So they also looking specifically in California that there's no increase in the enrollment in medical schools in this state. And because of the need to also control costs in hospitals, we've got a lot of hospitals that are actually, even though there's a need, they are actually laying off their nurses. The other problem is, is that because of the significant decreases that the doctors are feeling as far as the reimbursement for Medicare and Medi-Cal, they can't continue in private practice, so some are leaving because of that. So you're looking at this emergency department, and that's not too far from what is actually happening. It's crazy. When you look at our Statistics Fire Department specifically, last fiscal year to this fiscal year, we've actually increased by 10%, the number of calls that we actually see. So in order to be sustainable, we have to think about and be innovative about bringing new ways of providing healthcare. So at the state level, how did community paramedicine come into play? Specifically, the state actually put together and asked for a feasibility study of how community paramedicine would do in California. They published a report back in 2013, and what they came away with, looking specifically at the needs in California, they did recommend bringing community paramedicine to the state. Problem is, when you, the practice of community paramedicine is not recognized by any of the current state laws. So what they recommended before we made any legislation changes, that we actually studied at first. So it's a very smart approach. So in California, there's 13 different sites that have been approved to conduct pilot studies. So I'm just giving you examples of the different concepts that are actually being tested. So the first one is can a community paramedic or a paramedic with additional training take 911 patients with minor conditions and then transport them to alternate destinations other than what we have to do by law, and that's transport them to emergency departments? So there's four different sites within the state studying that. Then there's patients that actually frequently call 911. So can we identify who those patients are? And then can we help connect them to primary care or, if needed, social services? The third one is patients. The patients that I had talked about earlier, patients that are discharged by, from the hospitals. Can we identify those, the ones that are at risk for readmission, and can a community paramedic actually make follow-up visits and help them manage their care? The other, the last one is patients that have chronic conditions. Again, can a community paramedic actually make periodic wellness checks and then, again, provide education or help them manage their care? So this is one that we are actually participating with. It's the first one, and that's transporting to alternate destinations. So I'll go into the description a little more in detail. So we call, our project is actually called the Orange County Alternate Destination Pilot Project, and it's sponsored by the Orange County Fire Chiefs Association. And we are only involving, because this is a huge project with multiple system partners, we are just involving three cities. So it's the cities of Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, and Fountain Valley. We actually started September 14. We had multiple delays because of the complexity of this project. We were supposed to start back in June, so we were very pleased to announce that we started this past week. So the primary objective, again, for this one is can paramedics with advanced training safely triage and transport 911 patients with minor conditions to urgent cares instead of ERs? In order to actually participate, there were multiple levels of approval that had to occur. So we had to make sure that patients were absolutely going to be safe if they participated. So here are just some of the requirements. Paramedics had to have advanced-level training that participated, and we aren't involving all of our paramedics. We just selected a few from each department and trained them specifically in the Alternate Destinations Pilot. Our medical protocols all had to be approved at the state and county levels by the medical directors. The patients cannot be forced to be taken to the urgent cares. They must consent to participate. And if they're enrolled, they also had to agree to be transported to the urgent care. So again, if they felt that they needed to go to the emergency department, and that's where they wanted to go, then we would transport them there. The alternate destination paramedic also has to accompany the patient, and that's for backup and safety reasons. Again, if the paramedic transported the patient to the urgent care, and then we then found out, because the licensed professional there ended up evaluating the patient and felt that they really needed to be managed in the emergency department, then the paramedic would be on scene and be able to make that transport happen. The partner urgent care centers, in order to participate, we have five. They did have to be also approved. And then we pretty much have real-time monitoring, so the moment that we have a patient enroll, we can follow and track them. So there's also very close medical oversight. Just to give you an example, I don't have to list them all, but this is how the paramedics actually have to make these decisions. They're based, they can't just come up with who they think needs to go. There is very specific criteria. So they look at criteria to actually include these patients, and/or, and then there's also criteria that would exclude them from participating. So these are just some examples. So really, the important ones are their inclusion criteria. So it's something like a simple extremity fracture that could be a strain, or it can also be a fracture. It's a simple laceration that the bleeding is controlled, soft tissue injury or infection, and it has to be small in size. And then also isolated fever and cough. So it's very controlled. It's very specific. I just wanted to give you an idea of how huge this project is, and these are all of our partners. So I had mentioned the fire departments that are participating. Care Ambulance is on there because they actually provide the transport for the city of Fountain Valley, so they're a part of it. And then the three hospital systems that we involve was HOG. So HOG is part of the St. Joseph, HOG Health System. We have Memorial Care, and then also Kaiser Permanente. I told you earlier that we have five urgent cares that are participating, and they're all affiliated with these hospital systems. We have our county regulatory agency. We also have the state regulatory agency. There's another state agency involved as well. And then we are actually going to conduct research with this pilot. So we have UCI that's going to conduct the research for us. And then also involves the Emergency Nurses Association, and they're there just to make sure that they feel comfortable with this new addition as far as the community paramedic and making sure that they're, they are going to ensure patient safety. There are many challenges because you saw how many partners that we have involved. So currently, the way it stands, there is no funding structure to, in place to reimburse 911 transport costs to the urgent care centers or for the urgent care centers, so, services. So we do, in order to encourage all the partners to actually participate, we had to guarantee that there wouldn't be a huge loss in revenue. So that meant we had to secure grant funding. Patients, one challenge is, this study has never been done in the country, so we have no clue whether patients are actually going to cooperate and want to go to the urgent cares. And then because we chose to do research with this particular pilot study, the approval process whenever you do research study on human subjects is very, very strict, and so that's, that we had to go through, jump through many hoops, and that's why it's, we had delays, a delayed start. So this is just to give you an idea of our operating costs. These are the ones that we chose to try to offset with grant funding. There was a lot of people hours that were put into this that are, is just going to be in-kind contributions, and we're not going to try to get reimbursement for those services. So it's a total of 272, 285. And we have, I'm really happy and pleased to say that we will secure the grant funds. These are, you've already received two of the donations, one from California Healthcare Foundation, and then HOG Community Benefit Program is a substantial donator, and so you've actually seen these items go before you for your approval. We will be getting $125,000 from HOG again, and probably within the next couple of days, we'll be getting the award letter. We just recently submitted the grant application for the Memorial Foundation, and we're hoping to get that for the final fiscal year. This is to show you the specific paramedics that actually stepped up and chose to participate in the study for all three departments. And just to let you know what happens, this is a two-year pilot. What happens after the pilot? And the, when is the pilot going to be completed? If we get through 24 months from the start of the pilot, or if we enroll a total of 40 patients, including 150 actually being transported to urgent care, then the pilot is actually done. So we don't have a clue how long this will take, but the longest time that we have is two years. If you finish within a year, that's fine as well. After the pilot, we do a wrap-up, a final report. The state is going to provide recommendations on what we do with community paramedicine in California. If they do recommend that, we move forward, then legislative changes would need to happen before it's actually practiced. So from this day, going forward, you're looking at maybe five years down the line before this actually can happen, outside of the study. I'm going to end with this, with the community paramedicine studies and the concept of the pilot studies. They did put forth the first class ever in the state of California. They did graduate 77 community paramedics, and our captain, Phil Puhack, is in the center there and also here, and he stepped up to take the 100-plus class. And so we're very happy that we're being, we're part of that because it's definitely history in the making. I think that's it. So are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Curry?
First of all, I think this is a great idea. This is where medicine needs to go because of the impact on emergency rooms for all of the people who get transported to them. It's really bankrupting our hospital system, and it's taxing the resources of our own paramedics. So I'm glad to see that we're doing this. This is one of the ideas that I came across during my assembly race last year. I do know there's people on both sides of this issue, but it's a good, it's a good way to reduce costs, I think, overall. Is there any sense of, is there an indemnification for, to the city for taking somebody to a community center, to an urgent care who later decides he should have been taken to a, to an emergency room?
There's always that possibility that there, there is a risk, but we are dealing with the 911 patients with very minor medical conditions. So if, you know, if they need to, because let's say it's a more extensive fracture, and it actually has to be reduced in the emergency, the operating room, then there could be a risk, but that is all part of it. The same risk occurs today with what we're currently providing.
Maybe that could be incorporated into his consent form when we, when he consents to go to the, to the urgent care.
Yes, that's covered. That's definitely covered.
Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon?
Keith, where'd you go to law school? Because those are my questions exactly. I think that if it's a pilot program, additional liability may result, but that's to be foreseen. If we could look into some sort of waiver in the ambulance, I know it sounds so technical. It's sad that we live in this society, but that may be a reality. You said there were five UCCs that are going to participate in this program? What are they?
We have one in Newport, and that's 500 Superior. And then we have two in Huntington Beach, one Fountain Valley. And because Kaiser Permanente is participating, their urgent care is in Santa Ana.
Okay. That, how do you choose who's going to participate?
All of this is based on, because of the liability and risk, it's all based on patient choice. So they get to select their urgent care as well.
Thank you.
So we don't try to dictate what type of insurance. That's far too complicated. We show them the list, and we ask them which one they would like to go to.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Dixon?
Yes, thank you. Excuse my voice. Good presentation. You mentioned, let me see my notes here, that, well, obviously, the lower, the inclusion of the types of services are the lower incidence of medical care. Could you explain or define what percentage of the typical annual EMS transport experience is in terms of what percentage of those total trips are currently?
Yeah, we did a pre-study data and looked at it and to estimate what we would be dealing with. So we, because it was before the study, it was approximately 23% of those minor conditions.
Okay. And then with this presentation today, is this essentially how we're going to be launching this into the community? How do we make people aware of the questions they're going to be asking, the opportunities, and how this all rolls out? How will people know more about it? What's the communication plan?
What we're doing, actually, because this is such a large project, and a lot of work has gone into it, and already, before we even get started, there's a lot of misinterpretation of what we're trying to do. So we're actually putting together a video. So all the cities have cable networks, and they're going to be able to play that, you know, multiple times and repeatedly. So we're going to get it out in that way. So we've completely, completed all the videotaping of all the speakers, and so now that's in development.
Councilmember Pieter?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, so when is our official start date?
We actually start at September 14.
So just a week ago?
Yes.
Fantastic. How long will we go?
It's supposed to, it does have an end. If we don't get all our patients, it's going to end in 24 months after start. If we get all of our patients, which was either 400 total enrolled or 150 that have been transported to the urgent care, then we will be completed. So if we can get this done in less than a year, then we would be done.
So when you say 400 patients, you're looking at total patients?
Total patients with all three cities.
Or 150 diversions to a, to a-
To an urgent care center, correct.
Is there an estimated, so from our perspective, because we're treating a patient on-site and we're transporting him or her, the, the cost of doing that from the city's perspective doesn't really change?
No.
What we're hoping to change is the actual cost to the patient.
Correct, and the hospitals.
And right now, you say we don't get reimbursed for transportation to an urgent care center like we do to an ER?
Correct.
And that's because of Obamacare and the way they're set up now, or just insurance in general?
It's just insurance in general, and it was structured like that for decades. And so part of the hesitation to participate in studies is because of that. So we really need to get through this pilot study so we can make the necessary legislative changes, and then Medicare will come on board, and that will help us with the funding structure.
Now, I see that Fountain Valley's police, or Fire Department uses an outside ambulance service, but Huntington Beach and Newport doesn't. Is part of our evaluation on cost going to be, if we're, especially if we're going to an urgent care option, to provide an outside service rather than the paramedics to do the actual transport?
All of that is part of the statewide project. We're part of a larger statewide pilot study, and that is one of the things they look at. They do a cost comparison with the current system, and then with the system that is actually being studied. So they will be looking at that.
So they'll look at our numbers for that as well, or is there another city or group of cities that that part's being studied?
I think there was a total of four that were in alternate destinations throughout the state of California, so they're going to combine all of the data. So where ours may not seem that big, 150 going to urgent cares, they will be looking at all the data from the four sites that are studying this same concept.
Okay. Thank you very much. I am excited. Like everybody said, I think it's a wonderful, thoughtful process. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Petros?
The, the grant cost, you said, recovered, were about $220,000. Would that be something that we could anticipate as an annual budgetary increase if this were to go forward without grant funding in the future?
The difficulty is, like I said, really, when we're able to practice this, it's going to be five years down the line. So many things could change. Our, our delivery model can change, the, what we charge. There's so many things that can happen within five years, but if it were to be put in place, yes, it would be a good comparison.
If I called Doctors Ambulance Service today to be transported from my home to a skilled nursing facility, an urgent care, the, the emergency room, would I get a bill from Doctors Ambulance?
You would get it from whoever came to pick you up, yes.
If I called you and had a Newport Beach paramedic vehicle come and get me, living in Newport Beach, would I get a bill for that?
Bill from us? Yes, from the city. You'd get a bill from the city if you called 911, right? That's what would happen if you called 911. If you didn't call 911, and you called directly to the, the private ambulance, then you would be getting a bill from them.
Are they roughly the same in terms of the cost to the, to the user?
It's different because that would be considered if you just called directly the, the private ambulance company. That's called a non-emergency transport, and I don't know their fee structure, but it is a different cost than the 911 services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think this is exciting also, and I think it's just another example of how progressive this city is, whether it's law enforcement or water quality or whatever. We always seem to be getting out in front of things and taking on progressive projects to move the state-of-the-art forward. So congratulations on doing this. I think it's a terrific idea.
Thank you very much for letting me present our presentation, our pilot study, and then also our hard work, because it's been very challenging. Thank you.
I can imagine. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to study session item number three. These are water issues, Sage High School Environmental Program, overview of our citywide storm water quality program, and the median turf conversion update.
I apologize to interrupt. Mayor Selich, do you want to take public comment on that first item?
Oh, thank you. Any public comment on the paramedic program?
Mayor Selich, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and as you know, I'm a little dense, so there were a couple of points that were not totally clear to me. One, later this evening, you're going to be talking, I think, about the annual paramedic enrollment fee. And when we heard the no reimbursement for this transportation issue, I am hoping that means that the people who are enrolled in that program will not be having to pay the cost of the transportation themselves. I believe going to the hospital, they don't pay if they are enrolled in the program, and I would hope that would apply to this, but it was not clear to me. And second, we saw a list of the city's paramedics who were participating in the pilot program. It looked like it was maybe less than the full list of paramedics who work for Newport Beach. So I'm wondering if the concept of the pilot program is when a unit comes out to service you, if it has paramedics enrolled in the program, this will be offered to you, but it might be a unit that does not have them. It might not be offered to you. And then the final point I wanted to make, the very, very few of us who attend the city's Civil Service Board meetings have been hearing the last month or two about another Fire Department initiative in which our Fire Department is negotiating to enroll in Orange County-wide so-called automatic vehicle location program, in which in the future, perhaps more often than happens now, the responding apparatus may come from a different fire authority than our own if they happen to be closer than the Newport Beach units. It's intended to apply mostly to, to the very urgent cases. I understand it, but I can easily imagine that the dispatcher may think something is more critical than it actually is. So I'm wondering if the response comes from some other neighboring agency, if any of those are participating in different pilot programs within Orange County and might be offering different services. Thank you.
Staff, want to respond to those comments? I think there's three questions there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Postwood, Fire Chief. I think that Mr. Mosher was inquiring about the automatic vehicle locator system, that all the Orange County fire apparatus and rescue ambulances are embracing in the future, very short future. That program is a county-wide program that has not been fully developed yet, but is well on its way to being developed. And there was a presentation to the CSP, Civil Service Board, regarding the AVL, and if you would like, we can make a similar presentation during study session to this council, which may be more appropriate than coming up here and just doing a quick presentation. But in a nutshell, the emergency apparatus are responding to a emergency call with the AVL system in place. The person who's in trouble or the car fire will get the closest apparatus suitable for that response, whether it's an ambulance from Costa Mesa, whether it's an engine company from Laguna, or a resource from the Orange County Fire Authority. This particularly will happen on the perimeter of the city where there's, those resources are very close together. But as you can imagine, over on the HOG campus, if we've got three or four apparatus busy and there's a Costa Mesa unit there, the computer will see the Costa Mesa unit and dispatch them rather than a Newport unit to that particular case. So it's a good way to utilize resources, but we can identify it on a more global perspective with a presentation probably better. But just an example, recently, there was a Laguna Beach engine that was at Mission Hospital, which is well out of their area, just responding to a patient, dropped a patient off there, and on their way back- and on their way back to Laguna Beach, passed the Kaleidoscope where there was a heart attack. The dispatch center picked up the Laguna Beach engine, which was less than a quarter mile from the Kaleidoscope, well outside the area, and was able to provide ALS care to the person in Kaleidoscope until the Orange County Fire Authority units got there. So AVL is the way to go. If you would like a presentation, I wouldn't mind doing that. And what was the other question?
Chief, very briefly, the other questions were if our paramedics roll on a patient and neither of those paramedics, for instance, if there's two, is qualified to do the alternative destination, my understanding is they would not be taken to the alternative destination.
That's correct. This is a pilot project and there are very restrictive parameters of this project. So we've only trained a small portion of our paramedics to be enrolled in the system and provided them the extra and advanced training. So that is correct. You may be in another part of Newport, you would not have the opportunity. In some parts of Newport, you would be until we get our test group. Once the test group is done, we'll have the information and data we can put together to draw conclusions and then expand if necessary.
And the last question was if you're a paying member of the medic subscription service and you were taken to an alternate destination, your fees would still be covered by that subscription, I would assume.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to water issues.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Dave Webb, Public Works Director. Tonight, we want to spend some time talking about one of our larger, complex programs, our Urban Runoff Water Quality Program. Very vital program to Newport Beach, particularly given our water orientation, our visitor-serving abilities with the bay and the oceans. In relation to that, though, we had a contact made by a senior, Andrew Vorath, is with us tonight, who wanted to talk to you a little bit about a program he's doing through Sage Hills High School and the program he's doing in the bay. So I want to introduce Andrew and welcome up to the podium and he could go through his project here.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Andrew Vorath and I am a high school senior at Sage Hills School. And I just want to briefly present a service learning project I've been doing over the past year and some of my findings. So again, I am a student at Sage Hills School. And in addition, I'm also a rower for the Newport Aquatic Center rowing team. And because I'm a rower, I am down in the Back Bay nearly every day, rowing down there. And the health of the bay is very important to me. And I see a lot of the issues that go on with the bay and a lot of the problems with pollution and such. And so a program at my school, which all juniors are prompted to participate in, is the service learning program there. And juniors have to come up with a community service project. And so because I'm a rower and this issue was important to me, I decided that I would make a program which would hope to address these issues. And so I started this service project along with several of the students at my school. Unfortunately, the rest of my team couldn't be here with me today. But I just hope to present some of my findings and some of my suggestions that I have for my results. So firstly, I'd just like to say, when I started my project, I didn't really know which direction to go into, but you know, after a lot of phone calls and leaving voicemails, I got ahold of Mr. Kapler. And he really gave my group direction and really educated us on the issues in the bay. And along with his help and Mr. Guzman at the county's water quality lab and the NAC's director, Mr. Billy Whitford, my project had, they really gave us direction and really helped us to figure out what we wanted to do with my project. So as I said, our goal was to, you know, provide stewardship to the bay and, you know, have some sort of measurable impact or a difference in the health of the bay. And so a lot of, one of the things that I worked on at the beginning with Mr. Kapler is how would we address this? What methods would we have in addressing these problems? So what we ended up doing was, we ended up running a lot of trash collections along several of the beaches in the Back Bay and cataloging the trash which we collected throughout the bay. And in addition, we also ran water tests at three different locations in the Back Bay, which were known to be problematic and have water quality issues. I'll highlight each of those individual places shortly. We tested for three types of bacteria, which are E. coli, Enterococcus, and total coliforms. These are sort of indicator bacteria, which if these are in high counts, then that indicates that other bacteria which are harmful are also in high count. And we tested for these through call alert and enter alert tests and compared them to other tests which are done by the city in the areas. In addition, there was just also general investigating the sources of the waste and day-to-day observation on these areas that we were looking at. And ultimately, I'm going to address some of the results that we found and make some suggestions based on the results of my research. So I'm just going to highlight the three areas which we focused on. Area one is North Star Beach and the Newport Aquatic Center. Area two is Castaway's Beach. And area three is a small channel behind Linda Island near the Restaurant 333. Each of these areas, from speaking to people in the community and, as I said, seeing them day-to-day when I row, I felt that these are areas which could be, which would be useful to take a look at and address. So firstly, I'm going to talk about the North Star Beach and the Newport Aquatic Center. This beach gets an enormous amount of use. The North Star Beach is a public beach and there are many people who walk their dogs there and launch boats from there. And the Newport Aquatic Center has many members and boating teams. I'm a member of the rowing team there, but they also have outrigger teams and paddling teams. And those beaches get a lot of use and it's really apparent that it gets a lot of trash that collects on that beach from the visitors and from the current pushing it onto the beach, in addition to dog waste that is left. So when we ran our water tests there, what I thought would be a useful way to address the problem was, we collected, Mr. Kapler in the county environmental health collects water samples at North Star Beach. And I felt what might be useful to do would be to collect water samples upstream of where the beach was and compare my results to Mr. Kapler's. And sure enough, my results yielded a lot less bacteria than Mr. Kapler's did, which shows that this beach was obviously a source of waste. And from observation of all the use that the beach was getting and the waste that was left, it was really apparent. And so one thing I want to address is, I have some other images here, a lot of use on the beach with the users, like the people in the neighborhood around bringing their dogs to the beach. I don't know if the laser pointer works or not. And in addition to the right, I'm sorry for the unpleasant imagery, but I felt that this was useful to show because I didn't just come across this waste on the beach and take a picture of it. It happened to have my phone there. I planned on going to the beach to take this picture because I could count on there being dog poop there. The community really loves to bring their dogs there and it's great that they can, but I feel that it'd be really useful to address this issue. And one thing I would like to point out is, in the image that I have up here to the right, this is the said beach that has the issue with dog waste. Along this entire beach, even though it gets so much use from dog walkers, there are no stations with dog waste bags along them. The only available sign that has the dog waste bags on them is at the very entrance to the Newport Aquatic Center, which can be sort of seen in the distance in this image, up to the left corner of the page. And it's very much out of the way of the beach where the issue is. And it's often overlooked because dog walkers, it's along a street, and so dog walkers don't usually walk along the street. And I believe that one of, a good suggestion to have would be to add a dog waste bag station at this point in the North Star Beach from where I'm standing when I take the image, and in addition, at the other end of the beach near where the Newport Aquatic Center is. In addition, I'm going to talk more about this later, but I think that it'd be useful to update the signs which warn of littering and dog waste on the beach. And lastly also, I know Mr. Kapler is working on this currently, but I believe that it'd be really helpful to update and maintain the debris boom, which is put up at the NAC during the winter. Being down there and practicing on the rowing team during the winter, I see lots of trash collect along there and I think that it's really useful to maintain that. So next, I'm going to talk about the second site where we tested, Castaway Beach. This beach is a marine reserve and it gets a lot of use from fishermen and dog walkers and just general beachgoers. And just from running my trash collections along this beach with my group, we can tell that there's a lot of waste that collects along there. And like, for example, we found bicycle tires thrown on the cliff, Christmas trees with ornaments on them in January. We find beer cans of the same brands, several of them lying in the same place. So it's apparent that visitors who visit the beach leave these here. And in addition, there is dog waste that is left on the beach. And one thing that's important to note about this beach is that when it becomes high tide, the water completely encompasses all of the sands. And so any trash or waste that is left on the beach will enter the water. So in addressing this, I realize because of the high tide, it's difficult to put anything on the beach. But at the access point to the beach, there are trash cans there. But there are actually no dog waste bag stations, in addition, anywhere near this beach, even though it gets so much use from dog walkers. And so I believe it'd be really useful to put dog waste bags at this access point. And in addition, again, I would recommend that we update the signs there. Again, I'll get to that in a bit. And also, I understand that fishing is allowed on these beaches. I'm not too sure about the impact of fishing on the marine reserve, but I will look into Lastly, I want to talk about the third place where my group was focusing on. It's in a channel behind Linda Island near the Restaurant 333, like I mentioned. And this is a corner that we were testing and focusing on, a corner of the channel where the current pushes a lot of trash and waste and it collects in sort of a whirlpool. And so, of course, because this is near a lot of private docks, I don't know too much about what jurisdiction you would have there or how we would address this. But I, again, would like to recommend that we upgrade, update the signs that are in the area. And also, I know Mr. Kapler is working on putting in a trash skimmer, which I have displayed on these images, which is sort of like a filter which collects trash. He's currently working on that. And I agree that that's a really useful, that'd be a really useful way to combat the trash that is entering this channel. And so, yes. And so now to highlight the thing I was talking about with the signs. Beach signs along Newport Back Bay, which I've been seeing, as you can see here, I have them in the image, they list a lot of the regulations that are, it lists a lot of the regulations for this bay. But what I find is that these signs don't, they aren't very compelling in that, I believe that if we make the signs more, make people feel more accountable with the signs, that it could really have a large impact on a lot of the trash issues and waste that is getting into the bay. Because I feel like, I feel that one of the larger issues is that people feel isolated and less accountable when they're on these beaches and that by doing some of the things which I list here, it can make people feel more accountable, such as listing the fines. There is up to a $500 fine for littering around the Back Bay and the Newport Bay. And warn about patrol officers which can cite them and give them a ticket and enforce the fine. I feel like that'd be pretty compelling. And, you know, maybe inform the public about the damage and the harm that this litter and dog waste has on the ecosystem. And, you know, really try to evoke an emotional response and instill community pride with that information on the sign. One example I like to use is Laguna Beach's signs. Laguna Beach's sign is on the left, whereas Newport Beach's sign is on the right. I feel that Laguna Beach's signs really, they are really a lot more compelling and they would be a good example to follow if we were to update the signs. And another example I'd like to use is, my parents told me about this campaign, I'm not sure if many of you remember it, but it was an ad during the 70s with the crying Indian paddling his canoe down the river with the litter everywhere. It was part of the Keep America Beautiful Incorporated campaign. My parents told me about it and I thought it might be a useful example. In addition, I have another Laguna Beach campaign or sign here, says Keep Laguna Beautiful. We have Keep America Beautiful and Keep Laguna Beautiful. I thought, you know, why not have something like Keep Newport Beach Beautiful? That is something that I'd like to suggest. Again, just to summarize some of my suggestions, I believe that updating the signs along the beaches and docks, in addition to adding the dog waste bag stations at these areas would be really useful. Some of the projects which I mentioned before were the Debris Boom and the Trash Skimmer, which Mr. Kapler is currently working on. In addition to having that sort of public awareness portion where we make the signs really compelling. Another couple general suggestions, which I don't have a whole lot of evidence for because I didn't run water tests there, but I understand this from going there and seeing this through observations and also through speaking to locals, is that along the Back Bay Trail and along the trail on the cliff above Castaway Beach, there is a trash can issue where there are plenty of dog waste bags, but there is a lack of trash cans. And so one story I hear is that along the Back Bay Trail, and I've seen this myself as well once, is when you walk along the Back Bay, there are plenty of dog waste bags, but you'll see along the trail when you're walking, you'll see little dog waste bags tied up with poop in them on the side of the trail. And so that people, they come across the dog waste bags and they pick up their dog's poop, but they don't want to carry it for miles to find the trash cans. And so I feel that implementing, maybe looking into that a little bit more and putting trash cans along those trails would be useful. Okay, just a few conclusions. I feel like overall, a bigger effort needs to be made to prevent the trash from entering the bay. People should, you know, we should try to make the people feel more responsible by having these upgraded signs, which, you know, make people feel more accountable. And then also make it easier for them to be more accountable and responsible by implementing these trash cans and dog waste bags. Again, with the public awareness portion, that's kind of where I'm aiming to take my project with the next year. In addition to updating the signs, I'm hoping that I can work with Mr. Kapler and maybe speak to some elementary schools and maybe Boy Scout troops and, you know, teach them about the, teach them about the issues in the bay. And along with the signs, I feel that this sort of Keep Newport Beach Beautiful campaign will have a larger effect than simply picking up the trash every couple weeks. Because as much as my group is willing to go pick up the trash every time, if we just, if we don't actually address the problem at the source, we're going to be fighting a losing battle, I feel. And so that's about it. I just want to thank a couple people who helped me out. Mr. Kapler, again, he was really great and he really gave my group direction and really educated my project on the issues in the bay and about the efforts that are being put into the bay and about where we could put in more effort. And he really guided me and he was a great help. I want to thank Mr. Guzman as well at the Water Quality Lab for really teaching me a lot about the water testing process. That was really interesting. And Mr. Whitford, the director of the NAC, for allowing me to use this facility and some of his boats for my water testing efforts. In addition to Dr. Haney and Mr. Jordan, two teachers at Sage, who are my service learning advisors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excellent, excellent presentation and well done. Does staff have any reaction to some of the suggestions? Sound like there's some pretty good ones in there.
Yes, and we're very thankful for folks in the community to be able to do this. I believe Andrew's gone to our Water Quality Subcommittee and John Kapler's made a couple of these notes and some are very good, and I think we should look at some of these. So we'll be pursuing this and following up in the months to come, along with-
Would you like to identify some of the other members of your team? Give them a little bit of credit.
Yes, as I said before, they couldn't make it tonight. There are four other members in my team, Josefa and Omar Simji, Chris Allen and Martin Shin. They're four of my classmates and they helped me out a lot. In addition, there are other friends of mine who go to school with me. In addition, there are people on my rowing team who in the past, even though they're not part of my actual service learning group, they have joined us for our trash collections and they helped me out as well.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon.
Andrew, thank you so much for, excuse me, bringing awareness to this important subject. My apologies for my voice. As staff knows, we have a similar problem. I represent District One and over on some of the ocean side beaches and at the River Jettie, at the San Ana River, we have what has become- Jettie, at the San Ana River, we have what has become everybody's favorite unleashed dog park. It's actually county property, and we're working to figure out a way how we can step in because I, as Chair of the Water Quality Committee, we do have a concern about the water quality aspects. And I'm a dog lover, and dogs should be on leashes. I think you've highlighted an important aspect because I'm focused on the District One aspect of the beach, and water and trash issues particularly, and signage issues. On the boardwalk, as staff knows, we are constantly wrestling with the fact that people really don't read the signs. There's sign pollution, and they're just no, as Dave says, they're called no signs. And maybe we need to look at a more positive approach. I think you've identified some examples and the need to look at this. So I want to commend you and your colleagues for bringing this to our attention. And I think in addition to the Back Bay, on the Oceanside and other water-facing areas, we have an opportunity to improve our community and get the community involved. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilor Petros.
Andrew, thank you very much. That really was a well, well put together presentation, and I appreciated your thoughtfulness and your recommendations. You know, the thing that is telling is the quality of our bay directly affects not only the recreation, you know, paddling and rowing, real estate, the local economy, tourism. Every facet of the success of Newport Beach is affected by the items that you brought up. So I'm hopeful that we will actually take into account some of your considerations and really look at this. I commend you as a high school senior for coming up with this type of detail, and it really is, speaks well for the learning institutions of Newport Beach, that this is the quality of the citizenry that we get as a result of that. One question that I did have, and I don't know if this is Dave to you or John, the county's got that major trash interceptor project up on the Delhi Channel. Where is that now? And can you speak to the volume of trash that that will intercept once it's in action?
Actually, I can, I have that in my presentation later, but we are in the process of putting together a project on the Delhi Channel. It's a combination project with the City Coast Mesa, San Ana, and the county. Funding is now in place, they're working through the design, and hopefully we can get to construction soon. That project will catch the first flush trash, which will probably be the first of that level. We have a lot that we've done in the city for catching our storm drains, but major channels have always been the next frontier. And this is a big channel we're catching, coming out of a very highly industrial, dense area that generates a lot of trash.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave, continue.
And again, thank you, and that was a great lead-in by Andrew. And this is a very, as I said, very large, complex program. So it took me a few times to get through this. We have a lot of slides, and I'll try to respect your time in that. One thing I want to start off with, we have some very talented and key players that run our program, our staff members. And you met John Kapler, and he was introduced tonight. Bob Stein just walked in, he's our Assistant City Engineer, has a lot, a big hand in this program. Mark Vekoevich is getting deeper and deeper in that, as well as myself. And Shane Berkley are the kind of movers and shakers behind a lot of this. And then city staff through MOD and other departments have a lot of play in this. So with that, I'll just go right in. So we're going to be talking about our urban runoff water quality program tonight, and the key components, most of them are right here. We revolve around the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. You hear this word NPDS, and that's where that comes from. There's a program and policy component to this program. We also deal with what they call total maximum daily loads. It's a very strict regulation level of compliance on certain constituents. We're going to talk about other constituents' concerns, some of our capital projects, one we just talked about, our ongoing maintenance efforts and operations, runoff reduction, and some community outreach and education, that's a big component of it, along with briefly on our program costs and the results we've been having. So our NPDS history basically dates back to 1987, which is the Major Clean Water Act that started this and brought in the NPDS requirements. And it regulates the discharge of urban runoff and storm pollution. And that's the key thus we're trying to get at. The Regional Board, where we're in the San Ana region, basically implements that permit. And the way we've worked in Orange County is we've made the County of Orange the lead on that permit, and all the cities are co-permittees on that. So we kind of work together in that. We're entering our fifth term permit every five years, so this has been going for some time now, and we're just starting to negotiate how that's going to come about. The NPDS requirements are the implementation of stormwater management programs. It has a construction component where we have to implement best management practices. You hear this term BMPs, that's where that comes from. There's an inspection component. We have construction sites inspections, municipal yard inspections, commercial, industrial. There's also performance enforcement, I'm sorry, perform enforcement measures. And then we have to participate in various meetings. We have subcommittee meetings and general permit meetings. We have an educational component out of that. And then we have to submit annual progress reports to the Regional Board and the EPA on how we're doing on that. So under our inspection program for 2014, we had over 750 construction site inspections. We did 27 municipal facility inspections, that's really inspecting our own facilities. We did 59 commercial inspections and 14 industrial. That's a rather low number. We don't have a lot of those facilities in town. You go into Anaheim and San Ana, those numbers are much higher. We also inspect our restaurants. We did 450 restaurant inspections, and this is mainly fat soils and greases. And if you can recall, say 10 years ago, we were really having a lot of problems with sewer overflows and things like that. So we got involved in this to make sure the grease traps are cleaned out, and that are good operating procedures to eliminate the possibility of a sewer overflow. We have several watershed programs. These developed programs that we follow, the implementation plan. This one here is the Central Orange County Implementation Plan. We did a harbor area management plan back in 2009, a Newport Coast Management Plan in 2007. These have a lot of guidelines and things we want to look for, also generate projects out of that, and we implement that into our capital improvement program. Program policy and oversight really starts in this chamber, it's with you, the City Council giving us direction, how you want to appropriate spend money, how you want to go after certain constituents. You've created the city's Water Quality Coastal Bay Tylenol's Committee, and that's our local committee. We also have a regional committee, the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee, which is a group of stakeholders of other cities in the county. And then we have a staff committee, the NPDS Technical Advisory Committee, which I sat on for years, and working groups at various levels that provide that policy and oversight. Our own Water Quality Committee that we have, and we have two of our members here today, Mayor Pro Tim Dixon and Councilman Muldoon, sit on that with various other members on the screen, they're listed there. And they're giving us guidance and looking at our program and kind of guiding it and giving suggestions to this council on where to go and that. They've developed a series of goals already, and this is the top eight they have for the next three to five years. Their number one goal is the Big Canyon Water Quality Restoration Project, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the future on this PowerPoint. Citywide trash reduction, you heard a little bit of that from Andrew. We've really been focusing on trash, and I think that's going to continue because I think that's our next frontier. We've picked up turf replacement in here because obviously with the drought, and we're doing a lot of work on there. We're going to talk about that after this PowerPoint. And then we're looking at our drought response, tiered water rates, water supply. Their next item is discussion on the sediment qualities, the objectives in Newport Harbor, and that's a big thing with the dredging operations and the sediment coming out of San Diego Creek. Another project on there is the West Bay Phase III, which is kind of by Irvine Avenue on the west side of the bay, up there, Environmental Restoration Project. And then the San Ana-Delhi project we just talked about is right upstream of an area where they're going to do a wetlands restoration, kind of right by university there, the dirtline channel of the Delhi area there. And then the last one on their list is the Citywide Educational Program. So that's kind of their goals they've set for the next three to five years. Working with that committee and staff's put together with their assistants, a kind of an overall map, and this is kind of, if you look at this, is a small snapshot of it. This is all the various projects we know of kind of going in our area, the regional projects, their outside projects, their habitat restoration, their water quality. So we tried to kind of get an idea of what's going on, what's been done, so we can get a better sense of piecing together where we have synergies or where we think can maybe improve the process or save some money. I mentioned the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee. This takes a little wider out now. You've got your partners down there, the County of Orange, Newport Beach is on that, the various cities, all throughout the central watershed. And we get together and work on larger scale problems, the TMDLs I mentioned, water quality, larger issues that really take a concerted effort. And with Newport Beach being at the end of the pipe, it really takes a lot of this, and most of the improvements we can find, because we've done a lot, need to come from the upstream. This map kind of represents that watershed, and you can see some of the large areas in here. It stretches from the Newport Bay, obviously, but the effects come all the way back from Lake Forest, up in the foothills, along the central foothills, it reaches up to Orange, large parts of San Ana and Irvine, and even over in Laguna Woods, those areas. They all drain down into the upper Newport Bay and then out the bay. So you can see why it's important for us to work with these upstream partners, because what they do or don't do really has an impact on how our water quality is. TMDLs are really the big issue that they've been working on, and the first one that came about was the sediment TMDL. And this had to do with basically the upper bay silting up, getting the need for dredging. Navigation was becoming a problem, a lot of this silt moved into the lower bay. So in 1983, we started processes, and Newport kind of led this and got this committee together to address sediment. They started doing detention basins in the foothills and other areas, lining channels. You can see the San Diego Creek below you, a picture of that and what it is. It's a soft bottom channel, but the sides have now been put in soil cement, which is non-erodible. A lot of our sediment was coming from big storms, a lot of development runoff, and it was just eroding these sandy channels. So we're really been stabilizing this. They put a TMDL in place on this in 1999 to try to get a better handle on that and really put numerical limits in place that would help eliminate some of the sediment and focus on reducing it. The sediment TMDL limits are basically here, and the general limit on that is the 62,500 tons a year on a 10-year average. That's really the sediment target coming into the upper Newport Bay. It's got some other ones about keeping a minimum depth in the basins. And if you're not familiar, the upper bay has three pre-dredged basins in it. And then if you go up into San Diego Creek, right by MacArthur Boulevard, heading up to the 405 freeway, there's three additional basins in there. And they've been pre-dug, and they basically are there to catch the sediment coming down. And then we occasionally come out and dredge that material out, again, trying to catch it before it comes in the bay. We find that it's a lot cheaper to get it there versus letting it get in the bay and doing a large project. So this is...
But Dave, what does the 62,500 tons convert to in cubic yards?
Cubic yards, well, you got one cubic yard is basically 2,700 pounds, so I'd have to calc that out. I don't have a number for you on that, but it's quite a lot. Maybe someone has a calculator out there.
Tony's doing the calcs.
And you can calc that out. But if you look at here, this is kind of a long-range graph of how we've been doing, going back to 1995. And you can see the big spikes, those purple lines are basically the large storm sediment loads coming in. We had occasional years where we had 350, 400,000 tons of sediment coming in. 1998, you can see, it's over 600,000 tons of sediment. Then we get the TMDL in place, we've done a lot of measures to come in place. The red line going across here is basically our 10-year average limit, we have to stay under. So you see that a couple of years we've gone over that, but generally that dash dotted black line is where we stand, that 10-year average. And we really have knocked that load down. In the sediment battle, we've got a little bit more to do on that, but we're trying to declare victory on this TMDL. We're working with the Regional Board to show that we really have put things in place to address that. Another one of our TMDLs is nutrients. This is mainly phosphorus and nitrogen, fertilizers, things like that. We had a lot of excess nutrients coming down and creating large algae blooms, both in San Diego Creek and in the upper and lower bays. A TMDL was put in place and adopted in 1998 to really reduce those. And the major points of that was to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus levels to 50% of the loads from the 1990 to 1997 load averages. So we needed to reduce these loads in here of, say, 50% by 2007 for our summer loads and our winter loads. We needed to get a 50% reduction by 2012. And the good news is we're meeting this, and that's again through this partnership and concerted efforts by the county and the cities and the city of Newport Beach leading that. A lot of things came in place many years ago. We started finding the nurseries up by the El Toro Base and other areas where they're growing a lot of crops. We're just running off with their irrigation, and that irrigation was carrying the nutrients, the fertilizers into the water body and downstream. So we got the nurseries to do better management practices, we started recycling that water, reducing the runoffs. We did a lot of education with gardeners and maintenance, you know, they used to come out and just hit that thing, and the fertilizer would go all over the sidewalks and things if we could reduce that amount of runoff. And we also put in what we call natural treatment systems. Those are basically wet systems where the water flows through, and plants and other things absorb that nutrient. With those, we found that we're really starting to meet our targets. This is an example of a natural treatment system up in the city of Orange. IRWD has also done a lot of these type of treatment systems, and they really found effective to take out those nutrients before the water continues downstream. And you can look at this graph kind of right here, it starts in 2007. We're really up there, our nutrient line, nitrogen is that red line. And you see before 2007, we're up there in the 12, 14 parts per million, or milliliter. And we've really knocked that down to a consistent load now, and we're not seeing the algae blooms and things that come with that.
Dave, how much of that is attributable to the fact that we're in a drought and there hasn't been a whole lot of runoff?
I couldn't probably, there is some level of drought. I don't have, the drought started probably, what, 2011 and on? We've been in that a while. This is going back further, and I can see some of the wet years, there are no big spikes in there. And again, this is runoff, it's not necessarily storm flows. So you're going to see a lot of nutrient washout in a big storm, it's just going to come through. But we're looking at that low-level water coming through continually down the creek. That's what has really knocked the top off. And you'll see here, basically, here's a graph that shows the algae blooms that we've been seeing. There's the green line, that's the density limit we're trying to hit, and the black line, that basically the downward trend that we've been knocking it down. You also notice that orange line, the perpendicular orange line, that's when the San Joaquin marsh came online. That was a major issue when we started, that's a natural treatment system, if you've been up in that area, IRWD runs that. That really started knocking down some of the nitrogen and phosphorus loads coming out of the treatment system and into the channel, and that's helped immensely. Another TMDL we're looking at, a little harder to get at, is the organic chloramine compounds. And this is really the toxicity that we're looking at here. These legacy pesticides that we were dealing with, the Irvine Ranch and other places that used to use DDT and PDCs, some of these legacy pesticides, they haven't been used in a long time, but they're out there, they're still from the crops and they're in the ground. And when we have runoff and things, they get in the waterways. We had a TMDL established in 2007 on this. We've done a lot of sampling, but the good news here is the legacy pesticides seem to be going away. The halflights are, you know, getting shorter. As we've developed, and a lot of these avocado fields and orange fields and stuff have been basically developed over, we're not seeing the runoff from those anymore. So we're seeing a much reduction in that, and hopefully that's going to keep going. There is some concern about the new pesticides coming on, we'll talk about that in a little bit here, but this is good news, and we've also seen a reduction in our citywide pesticide use. That's through our education efforts, our training with the county, trying to get gardeners and homeowners to use that in a better, proper manner and not have so much overspray and Another TMDL we're working on is the fecal coliform indicator, or we call it the FIB TMDL. This is how much bacteria is in the water. And fecal coliform is an indicator bacteria. It's not necessarily a harmful one. What it's telling us is usually the high presence of this bacteria tells me there might be something else, like a pathogen or something in the water. It's typical, we use this in our wastewater treatment plants. So this is what we've been using. I know there's a switch we're going to go to in Sichetkakis for another type of bacteria soon, but in this case, when we had this TMDL put in place in 1999, the city had originally four permanent postings showing we had a continual bacteria problem in these areas. And we looked at that, and there's a note at the bottom here about a natural exclusion. That's a key point I'll talk about later, but there is currently no natural exclusion source indicator for the bacteria. But we had four permanent postings we had to address, so we started attacking those. And the good news at this point is, three of them, the blue dots there have all been eliminated. We no longer have a long-term posting there. The fourth one is the Arches Drain, which drains out of Superior, the San Andy, our corporate yard, that area coming down through there, is still a long-term posting. Another good news on that is that we've got a plan for that, we're attacking that right now. There's the watershed that it drains in, coming down through Costa Mesa, Newport Boulevard, two big drains that converge at the Arches and basically bring a lot of bacteria into that area there. We're looking at putting in two diversions in that sewer diversions, that'll take that low-flow water and basically hopefully dry that up, and will eliminate that long-term posting. Again, the good news here is there's three of them been removed. We've got money and funding in place, looking at removing that fourth one, and then we should be good. A point of note in here, I put a point in here with this biofilm study. We had a really kind of exciting thing here. John Kapler in our audience here, along with staff, and Dr. Skinnerd worked on this several years ago, and they started doing a study about the bacteria and how it seems to reshow up and remobilize. And they basically proved that there's a biofilm in the gutters and the storm drains, that even if you clean it, flush it out, it regrows pretty quick, and we start having bacteria problems again. And that's where we come and we start having bacteria problems again. And that's where we come into this natural source exclusion. We're looking, trying to get the regional board, and they're getting closer to agreeing to this, that we understand that there's a certain level of bacteria that keeps regrowing and we shouldn't penalize you for that. When we test and we find that, we should give you an out basically on that. So we're trying to get that worked into the permit so we can avoid some of these closures due to something that's a natural source and it's going to reoccur. So then we have other constituents out there of concern right now. We're working on selenium. You've probably heard some of our projects on selenium. There's also copper out there. This is particularly boat paints and trash, as we talked about a little earlier. Those are the big ones, I think, are coming. So in regard to selenium, we have, this map here shows you three major hotspots in the county. And the big red circle is kind of up in the central Irvine-Tustin area. The circle right below that over to the left is basically in the San Ana area. And the lower circle is our Big Canyon area. Those are really the hotspots in the county that are showing a lot of selenium. And the regional board is working with us to try to put a TMDL in place. The partners are trying to work to address this. Most of our upstream partners are working on the two upper circles and Newport Beach is really focusing on the lower circle, Big Canyon. And again, the selenium issue here is that back in 2010, we did tests and we found that we had high levels of selenium in the water, in the sediment, in the algae, in the invertebrates, the birds, fish. They all had this in it. It's very bioavailable. So, and the good news is we put the bottom, and I got to credit Bob Stein. He's been kind of leading this plan, is that we do have a plan. We've been systematically putting things in place. This from, this exhibit here is the Big Canyon watershed. And in 2008, you'll notice the different colored lines. There's a red line that goes from the bay all the way up to basically MacArthur. And that's a very hot, high-level stream of selenium going down. There are up to 12 to 100 parts per million, or billion, I'm sorry. To give that perspective, the regional board would like us to be around three, five, in some cases 12. It's a really high stream. So we started attacking that. How can we address that? The concern there is this selenium comes down in a cellionate and it slows down. And as it slows down, it tends to change form to cellionate, which is the very bioverse form of it that the animals take up, the invertebrates take up, and causes the problems. Selenium is, you may or may not know, that was the constituent if up north in one, I think it was the Kester Reservoir. They had a lot of deformities caused by the high levels of selenium. That's really raised the scene. The bird eggs were deformed, the chicklings and things like that coming out. So they're really concerned about that. And at certain levels, we're still arguing what level that is. So we've done some projects, and this is a diversion project we did in Big Canyon Country Club, just as you come under MacArthur at the 11th hole. We did a sewer diversion here about a year ago, last April. And we found that that really knocked off a lot of the selenium coming down. So as you look at our testing in 2014, that line coming out of MacArthur going towards the bay has now turned green because we've taken that hot load off it. We've also really knocked it down going through the golf course. But we've got a couple of other sources we have to deal with. We have to deal with the lower Big Canyon and we have to deal with the golf course lakes in there that still have a high level. So we've got a couple of projects we're planning on doing. This is a treatment system that we're putting in lower Big Canyon, just south of Jamboree or just off Jamboree. There is the watershed crosses the roadway and heads towards the bay. This has to do with a bioreactor that'll knock out the selenium levels along with some diversions and wetland treatments. And then it'll go back into the natural system. This project is in the funding. We've got several funding grants in place for this. And we're moving forward on this one right now. We've also talked about maybe working with the golf course. We found that if we put in like a mixing device, it doesn't let that water slow down and settle and it changes the selenium content, that it stays soluble and washes through the system. This has been effective. So we might look at putting some of these mixing devices in the various golf course lakes. And we think with this, maybe a couple of the diversions, the downstream, a project we're talking about, we might have this watershed under control much more in compliance, much further ahead than our partners to the north in Irvine and San Ana is just about to get theirs in control. This is our projected selenium impacts in 2020 with these projects in place. And you can see we're pretty much in performance. And the nice thing is we're leading the pack on this. The regional board is very happy with the city's efforts here. And we'll probably get out of the spotlight on this and they'll focus on some of our partners to the north. And again, this is probably future projects. We're looking at Big Canyon Restoration Phase 2. We're looking at some grants now. We have the Prop 1 pass and there's funding in place for that. So there may be about 1.5 million from the Ocean Protection Council, maybe another 5 million or so to work with the Department of Fish and Wildlife to correct their wetlands down at the bottom. By the way, that wetlands is doing better, but that's the one we had vector problems in. And we have stagnation and selenium buildup. So we're looking to maybe take that out and this might be the money to do that. So we're aggressively looking at grant programs and other things that will address this problem. Another source that we're dealing with is copper. And you might have heard some of this. And the big problem with copper right now, we have some material in the sediments, but the leading issue right now is the anti-fouling paints on boats. They have copper in them, as you know. It keeps the critters from clinging to the boats. And the kind of the balance here that we've been dealing with, we've been taking an aggressive stance with the water board from what they want to do is implement a TMDL that would ban copper paints. And we're taking a position that, well, maybe that's not the right thing. Maybe we still need copper-based paints. But we recently had the Department of Pesticides make an order to reduce the amount of copper in paint. So we have a lot of paints probably out there, legacy paints that might have 30 parts per million in copper in the paint. And the new ones are in the range of nine, maybe 14. We think if we could get those paints into the system and once the fleets have changed out, because copper paints last five, six years on boats, once we change it out, some of our copper issues may go away. We do have some hotspots due to lack of circulation. But our position is trying to work these paints through the system, but not go to the point where the regional board's trying to go right now, is just ban those paints altogether. So there's a lot of work going on in that. City manager put a nice letter together. We talked to the regional board recently about that and still talking to their staff about what we feel is an appropriate approach for that. And the next thing you might talk about is trash. And the good news is here is Newport's kind of being at the end of the pipe. We've been a leader in looking at trash. Trash is probably the next frontier. And actually, there's a pilot project in our watershed here for a trash TMDL. We've gone way ahead of that. And we've been putting in what we call continuous deflection separators. There's a picture of a unit in there. You can see them kind of going in. And what it does is the storm drain goes through this item. It spins around through a screen. The heavy stuff drops out. The floatables are stuck on the top and the water's allowed to be screened out. You can see the picture at the bottom right there is basically looking in one of those before we clean it. It's just got a lot of debris on top and also at the bottom. These, we have about 40 of these in place now. They're doing a great job by cleaning up. A couple of projects I'll talk about in a minute are also addressing trash. The next frontier for us is going upstream to our partners and getting them to be aggressive on trash like we are. And then we might have a little better report from someone like Andrew. He was here earlier talking about the trash coming down through the bay. I mentioned this a little earlier, Mr. Petrus, this is the project you talked about. This is the Delhi Project that we've been, we actually implemented this. And now we've kind of give it over to the city, San Ana and Costa Mesa and the county. This is a picture in there is the Delhi Channel going through the golf course just next to the 73 freeway. It's a large channel that drains out through Costa Mesa and San Ana. Heavy industrial areas, heavily commercial areas, a lot of trash and debris. And also a hotspot, if you go remember back to the selenium load going in there. That's one of the three hotspots coming down here. This project's basically going to put in a diversion that'll take that low flow and we'll put it into a sewer diversion. Or in this case, maybe a unique opportunity to put it into the lake that's in the golf course there. And they use that lake to run the irrigation system on. So maybe we'll use that low-flow water to irrigate the golf course. And then the second component of it is, is the diversion's going to take to a level where we take that first flush, that first three-quarters of an inch, inch coming down rainfall. That first flush carries a lot of trash load. We're going to try to divert that through a system, take the trash out of it. And that's a lot of trash that won't end up in the upper and lower bay. And this project's funded. It's in the works. It's in design. And hopefully we'll get into construction and not to in the near future. Now, the project we're working on in Little Corona Mar is an infiltration project. If you're familiar with Buck Gully and Nancy Gardner was kind of the lead on this many years ago, trying to address the concerns of a lot of nuisance flows coming down Buck Gully from irrigation. That water ponds at the bottom, creates stagnant areas that we have to address. And then it takes a concentrated load into the little tide pools there. And right off the coast here is our Newport Coast area of special biological concern, basically. And it's got a higher level of standard. And we want to stop that water by diverting it or doing something with it. So the past many years, we've been trying to dry up the area. We've been working aggressively with homeowners and the golf course and other folks to try to reduce the amount of runoff. We're still getting a lot of runoff coming through here. So this project was initiated to basically do an infiltration, a sand filter-type project. We're going to take that stream just below, just above the Check Dam and we're going to pipe it over to an infiltration gallery underneath the sand. Works great. It's a big sand filter. The water percolates through, works its way out to the ocean. The constituents that are concerned are entrapped. The bacteria die. They hit the saltwater. And it should be a good project. It's underway right now. We've got grant funding from OCTA for this. And hopefully we'll get that implemented pretty soon. We're working with coastal staff, very new for obviously the regulatory staff. We've had coastal staff out there. They don't seem to raise any red flags or interested. We've had Fish and Game look at it. They like it. So we're hoping we can implement this project. And then we have another project up in Bayview Heights. And this came to council some time ago. This had the two homeowners on either side, we have an agreement with, to build a storm drain through their system to stop the erosion. And then at the bottom of that system, before it goes in the bay, there'll be a vegetated wetland. It's basically a natural treatment system. It takes some of the constituents out before the water's released. This is again funded, working through the design phase. Hopefully we'll get that in construction soon. Other things we do, our annual maintenance on our drainage system. We have about 3.2 miles of drainage channels and about 3,234 catch basins. Those are the openings on the side. You can see a picture at the bottom there with the screen on that allow the water off the street into the storm drain system. We clean those every year. And last year, we removed about 413 tons of trash and debris out of it. We also install about 435 screens on those catch basins every year and take them off prior to the winter season to try to catch some of the summer debris from going down in those systems. We have a program with our sanitary sewer system. Again, I mentioned that earlier. Very important to us to keep that, those overflows down. We started a regular surveying our sewers in 2003. We have a camera truck. We have to go in there. They're actually regulatory compliance now that we have to mandatorily videotape and clean our lines within every line in the city every 18 months. So we do that regularly to make sure we don't have billups, we don't have overflows. We have about 200 or 3 miles of sewers in our city. That's a lot of miles to take care of. We also installed and maintained five vessel pumpouts because one of the problems we found in the bay years ago was people would just discharge their waste out of their vessel into the bay. So we made it convenient by putting in public pumpout stations. And we also have a program where they have to die tablet their tanks and things to keep them from putting that material into the bay. And that's really improved water quality. But we do, they're pretty, they're good systems, but they take a lot of abuse, take a lot of maintenance to keep those pumps going. Just a fact, our oldest sewer line there is 1929. We do have an old system. We have new systems, but a lot of old systems. So we do make sure we maintain those properly and line them and do our sewer maintenance projects. Some of the other things we do to keep the litter from getting into our bays and our creeks is street sweeping. And this is, our services are contracted here, as you know. We have about 3,600 miles of streets we sweep. Last year, we removed about 10,600 tons of dry material out of it, which is a lot of material we kept out of the bay. The Water Quality Group, that I mentioned earlier, basically with staff, is also leading an effort to try to get the HOAs involved, the private streets, and get them swept. We had a little discussion with you earlier this year on that, how much sweeping is going on. We find we can probably do a better job there. So that's kind of an effort we're trying to do to catch that. And then obviously keeping up stenciling our basins and our educational component. We also run the household hazardous waste programs through the city. M.E.S.P. Operations usually runs this. And this is some stats on what we've collected last year. 100 gallons of paint, 200 used oil filters, 1,000 gallons of oil. It's nice to see the oil's gone down over the years. I think that has a lot to do with, a lot of people change their oil at a quick lube or something like that. Now, we used to have a lot of problems with people pouring it down the storm drain. And we've also got laws now. You can take your oil, like me, to an auto zone or something and they'll take it for free and recycle it. We also had a lot of e-waste collected. Again, that's not directly involved, but you know, that does have contaminants and things in it. If you break those things down and it gets into our water system, it'll end up in the bay and we'll have basically heavy metals come out of those.
Dave, on the street sweeping, I know of at least one of our contracts that has a performance metric in it that calls for the trucks to drive no faster than five miles an hour as they're doing a street. And we were told that there was telemetry on the trucks that we can verify that. I'd be interested to make sure that in fact they are going at a speed that they catch all this because I sometimes, I don't, you know, I'm watching. I don't know what the speed is, but it looks like they may be rushing to get a cup of coffee. I don't know. The other one that I would really encourage us to look at, and I've spoken to you, Mr. Kiff, on this, the coordination of trash pickup and street sweeping. All too frequently, the barrels are out in, on the curb and the trash guy will come around and miss the entire block because the trash receptacles are out in the street. So, you know, gutters are left dirty and you can see the sawtooth of the, of the street sweeper that went by. Could we please take a look at those two items, speed and then coordination with the trash?
I will surely pass it on to Ms. Presani, I believe is in the audience tonight, too. Another item we do is irrigation runoff reduction. This is a large program we've done for many years. And it's twofold. It's great now that we have a drought. We've been doing this for many years to reduce the amount of water runoff. But our initial goal was when we're having runoff, we're picking up pollutants and getting it down the storm drain. So we did a lot of education. We did irrigation audits. We encouraged the installation of high-efficiency rotor nozzles. We've installed controllers that are satellite-based, weather-based. A lot of effort's been made in this area. We've put a lot of money in this. We've seen a lot of grants from 2011 to 2014, 1.5 million dollars we've received in grants from like Metropolitan Water District and others for rebate programs to install these. We've conducted about 1,200 water audits, you know, 1,200 weather-based stations going in. That's a station that's run by a satellite that says, it measures various sensors in a controlled plot of land that says either water, don't water, it needs more water, it's too dry, or it's just rain, so shut them off. We've installed, that's a typo on that, by the way, and that number, 94,700 roughly, high-efficiency nozzles. And again, we've served about 1,100 customers and about 92% retention rate on that, which is a real nice program. It's successful. This program's really been highlighted, again, up at Buck Gully and some of those areas to try to reduce that water coming down there. Under the runoff reduction program, just that ET controller program, we've basically reduced about 33% of the runoff in that area, saving about 12 million gallons a year. You can see the graph there as we've been pushing it down. So successful program, a lot of work. And now really paying a benefit in the drought because that's water that would have been also counted against our water use. We've implemented turf reduction. To date, we basically removed about 292,000 square feet of turf and replaced that. One of our big projects, about 175,000 square feet of turf was the Benea Creek Sports Park we just recently did. And you see some pictures there. And yielding about an 8.7 million gallon per year savings in water. So that's another successful program, both on the conservation side and the water runoff, water quality side. Another big component of our NPDS program is our public education. And part of our permit fees we pay to the county every year is to do regional advertising. That's where you hit it. You see the pictures at the bottom with the bus logos and the brochures that go out. You'll see them at the movie theaters for the imprint. We did about 2.8 million impressions in 2014 through the advertising campaigns and other things they do on a regional basis. And then locally, we do our own public education, community outreach. You'll see a lot of this stuff, public service awareness. We reach out to the high schools and the kids, outdoor science camps and things like that, surveys, volunteer efforts. You'll see us there and mainly Shane and John Kapler. In fact, we just had the Green, the Green Expo this last week. And I believe Shane was out there. And again, Chance talked about water conservation, water quality runoff. So we do a lot of efforts there. And we've been successful on contributions. The city's been real aggressive on this. And we've received a lot of money over the years. And here's some of the totals that we have. From 2002 to 2014, just grants, awards in the water quality habitat, channel erosion areas, we've got 19 million dollars, which is a big pot of money. The Rhine Channel got contributions, $4 million, the upper bay and lower bay, about $55 million in there. So a lot of money's been flowing through under these programs to try to improve water quality. Our annual costs in this program run about 1.5 million dollars. And this has our NPDS and TMDL permits. We have fees we pay the county to do things for us under the NPDS and the TMDLs, studies, reports, work with the regional board to get those things in place. Our street sweeping program, our storm drain guard program. We have monitoring on our canyons and the ASBSs that run about 50,000. And then we have compliance and program costs of about a half million dollars, too. That's staffing and various permits and things like that. That's kind of our annual costs on that program. But the payoff's been significant and we're seeing that. We're seeing the best water quality in the bay since the 60s. We don't see the algae blooms anymore, see a lot less trash. I know we still see it and Andrew pointed out some that we need to pick up. Our Heal the Bay Report Card, one of the leading environmental organizations that's been monitoring the ocean, the beaches for years. Newport Beach has been very good standings for the last at least five, 10 years. We've really improved that. It wasn't so much when they first started out. I remember the bummer list out there and the things we used to be on. In fact, this year, we actually made honorable mentions on the honor roll with the wedge is on their honor roll. So we really have seen an improvement. Our efforts have been paying off. More to do, but it's good to see that. So if we look ahead, this is kind of, just kind of thinking what staff was saying, where we think we're going to be going. Urban runoff, some of the challenges, they're much more economically handled on the education side. If we can get people to change their- If we can get people to change their ways and stop it in the first place, that's the best use of our money. The next is source control. If we can control that source, if we can stop it before it happens, better. When we get into treatment, it's, it's more expensive. We, we've got to do something, we've got an ongoing maintenance cost, we've got to build something. So we like to start at the top, we really like the educational components and try to stop it there and get the sources stopped. We know our fifth term NPDS permit's going to have a lot more items in it. It always seems to raise the bar, and we expect to have what we'd call implementation plans and other requirements. We're just talking with the board right now on that. So there's going to be some changes on the way they handle our permit, and that'll be coming soon. Funny thing with the drought, if it consists, if it continues, we're going to probably find that our water quality impacts go down a little because we are seeing less runoff. We're seeing some of our areas dry up. But we also have to change our focus there, and we're changing staff accordingly to maybe adjust to the water supply issues and dealing with the conservation effort. In fact, John and Shane and Bob sit in our water conservation tax force and trying to get people to use less water. So we're, we're just changing our resource focus there. Looking ahead, I mentioned trash. I think that's one of the big frontiers we're going to have to deal with. We've taken big steps in this city to get there, we have more to go. We really need to start working with our neighbors to the north and, and folks because a lot of the trash is generated there, and, and as they have improvements and successes, that'll obviously trickle down to us, too, or not trickle down in that case. Pesticides is, is out there. We're not sure, they've changed pesticides, a lot of changes. The, as I said, the PCBs, the DDTs are gone. We've gone through another wave of pesticides. We're now looking at a new generation coming up, and we're not sure how they're going to react. They're supposed to have a shorter half-life, be less toxic, but surely if we can get in the education side and the training side so we don't have the problems, that's, that's where we want to be on that. Trace pollutants, there's always metals and things coming off cars and, and other small amounts, and the best way to do that obviously is dry it up. The less runoff, the low flows coming down those drains, the less we have to deal with as it comes in the bay. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to any questions and take a drink of water here.
Okay. Any questions, the staff? That's Mr. Pieter.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Hey Dave, where are we at as far as the city? Obviously, we've got all these areas to the north of us that drain into the San Diego Creek, which go into our Back Bay, which we have some or, some control and we're gaining more control over. But the area that we obviously have control over is the city itself. What would you say that we have as far as the percentage of our storm drains that drain into the Back Bay or to the ocean are being filtered in some form or fashion?
I don't know if I'd have that. A large portion, John, would you have any idea? We put so many CDS structures in, we put them on the trunk mains and of course everything upstream, so 20%, 30%?
30%.
Yeah. We've been real aggressive on that from zero five years ago. Some of them are very hard because like the structures we use, the CDS structures only go up to a certain size. In fact, we just did a Back Bay Drive down in Corona Del Mar, and we had to split it up. We couldn't economically put a structure in big enough to handle the carnation drain, so we kind of went upstream on both and notched it out.
You used two of the trash cyclers?
We used two of them versus one big one. It pretty much caught 99% of it, but it cost a lot less. And that program's mainly been funded through OCTA. They have a Measure M fund that we've been tapping, and we're one of the major aggressive cities going after that. So not too many people have been putting in those structures we have. I think you're going to see more of them in the future, though.
And the grates that you have in front of the, the storm drains themselves, is the goal to put that on every storm drain?
I don't know if the goal is to put that on. We do do those in the summer. The problem with those grates obviously is clogging. We just saw that recently when we had that kind of sneak storm come up this month. The grates were still on, and we had several areas where we had just a lot of trash and debris hit it and clog. We had some overflows, some little property damage.
Some flooding.
So, you know, we, the, the CDS structures are made for that storm flow to go through it, they're big enough. The grates are not. We have to use those strategically, but as we put like a CDS structure in, we're able to take the grates off of the upstream storm drains. It's a little more tricky down in the peninsula because there's no room in the tidal flow also plays into that to get something in the ground to catch that trash. So I think we're going to have grates in the future. I don't know if we're going to have them on every catch basin, though.
And this, you call them CDS drains, they really only pick out the trash. They're not taking out sediment, they're not taking out phosphates or other urban runoff. They're just to pick out the litter and the trash, right?
Well, they do take out sediment. They have a, a bottom chamber where all the heavy stuff falls out, and the sediment is typically what the, a lot of the pollutants cling to. So if you can take the sediment out, you also take out some of the, the oils and things. There is a certain amount that floats along with the floatables, and, and we've even looked at, I know they've been successful in putting some low flow diversions coming out of those that take off that floatable material. But you really have that center stream that goes through that the trash is taking out that has the soluble stuff in it, the antifreeze and other things. No, we haven't been able to treat that yet.
And what about particularly into the Back Bay? Let's say East Pla, Dover Shores, those areas that are directly adjacent. Do we have, I know we just approved and I guess under construction, the Big Canyon runoff, and as we capture the selenium, it'll also capture trash and a lot of the other urban runoff. What about other areas? Do we have the ability to go add, add those kinds of drains and, or, or filtering devices at the ends of the drains?
I think there's some more opportunities out there that we can tackle. We've got a list, our kind of hit list where we're going down. Some of the drains, again, they get into a size that I don't know if we can address. It, it's interesting, this, this project Bob's doing on the Delhi Channel. Like I said, it's the first major drain that's tried to take out storm flows. Maybe we can replicate that on some of the other ones. Most of those big drains are county drains, like the one right by Irvine. I'm trying to think, coming out of Indian Lake there. San Isabella Channel, that's another big drain coming out. A lot of it comes out of Costa Mesa, we just barely touch it. But if we can get the county to do something there possibly. We have most of our big storm drains, there's another one coming down Dover. Maybe we can break it in little pieces and get it, so.
Well, I appreciate you making the presentation. It shows that we've made a whole lot of progress, which I, I think is really important. It shows the rest of the upstream community that we're trying to do our part, so we can encourage them to do their part. I didn't see, you know, that, that long range plan on what we're going to do to finish or try to complete and get that at least 80% level. So I wouldn't mind having you come back and show future plans on different areas where you're, where you're thinking projects are feasible, and what kind of projects they are, even though they might be, you know, in a 10-year plan to get there. Thank you.
Airport Tim Dixon.
Yes, Dave, thank you. Thank you for going through all that. Excuse me, I apologize for my voice. I'll make this quick. So much of our city is behind gates. Could you please comment on the challenges that presents us in terms of storm drains as well as street sweeping and the impact of that, please?
Yes, and I'll try to remember, just a while back, I think we had a PowerPoint from Municipal Operations that talked about street sweeping in private communities. We do have a lot of gated communities. We found that not all of them street sweep and not on a regular basis. There, there are some that do a good job, some that do a fair job, and some that weren't sweeping at all. And as you can see from our, our data, we do collect a lot of material from them, and what we don't collect off the private streets is going to end up in a public storm drain somewhere or a public bay. So some of that can be addressed by best management practices by them, maybe us looking at our, our ordinances or codes or working cooperatively with them. Some of it might be able to be addressed by, as we put in, for instance, a CDS structure that picks up a public drain that also has some of the private communities coming through it. You know, we've taken care of that. On the new construction, I know we typically make them put a best management practice. I know we've had a couple of them put in CDS type structures, but most of ours are already developed. So we need to do some work there, and I think through your committee, that there's, there's more work to be done there as we identify it, maybe get some policy guidance from council.
One more point or comment. I just want to commend staff, and I appreciate your support, to Kevin and me, to Councilmember Muldoon and me, for the support we get for water quality, because your expertise, Bob and John's expertise, is really what guides us. One area I particularly want to commend is the aggressiveness with which staff goes after external sources of funds and particularly voters, statewide. Voters approved Proposition 1 last November, which has identified, what, billion dollars?
A lot, 7 billion? Yeah, there's been, that's where the money actually has been coming from. As you know, California's passed several water bonds, a lot of my water quality, so that's been a rich area for us to harvest. The other one is transportation that we aggressively.
Well, I, I just want to say that I, I appreciate how we have aligned our projects, our three to five as well as long-term goals against the identified sources of funding. So very little of what you presented really, other than operationally, comes out of our general fund. It's really going after, and it takes expertise and sheer doggedness to submit these grant applications and go after them and persist and win. And I just want to commend staff for the good work that you do, because I think compared to other cities, we do generate a great deal of external funding for these important water projects. So thank you for the good work that you do. I appreciate it. Thanks.
I got a couple of questions, Dave. One of the things I regularly get, and I can almost tell the time of the year I'm going to get it, is calls from people on Balboa Island on the algae and Grand Canal. And we're down there raking the beach up and cleaning, cleaning it up. What's, what's the solution to that?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if I have a solution. In talking to Chris and Shannon, we've had a couple, and it kind of comes and goes. We've had cases there that's persistent for a while, then it goes away. We had a new case kind of down at 19th Street on the peninsula. The last couple of years, we've had some algae down by the restroom there. I can't really tell you why it's there. Maybe it's something in the soil, maybe we got a seed pot or something going there. We do rake it up. It's kind of a double-edged sword, too. We, we kind of feel a little guilty because that type of algae is more, it's not, I don't know if it's so much a water quality issue, is it's just a natural occurring thing? And I know the residents don't like it, but is it something we should keep maintaining? If, if it becomes a real persistent problem, it might be something we want to talk to you folks about, about do we want to spend resources every year or should we just let it sit? But at this point, we have been raking it on occasion.
No, I know the residents on the Grand Canal that walk on the beach would not like to be slipping and sliding on algae. They like their beach down there. Bottom paint. My understanding is the stat, the, the Water Quality Control Board staff is taking a very rigid position on that, and most likely the board's going to follow the staff's recommendation on that. That, if that goes into effect, that's going to have a huge negative economic impact on this harbor. I mean, the, the cost of meeting those standards is from drastic to impossible. So what is our, what is our backup position if and when that happens? What are we going to do? Are we going to, is anyone looking at litigation or anything like that? Because it's going to have a huge economic, negative economic impact. In fact, I think it's probably the biggest threat to this harbor that's out there right now.
Yeah, I think, I think at least at this point, and through your direction, the city managers, we've been aggressively trying to educate the board and get them to a more reasonable position, i.e. and it's interesting seeing how the state works, and this is kind of like the Coast Commission, but there's two departments we're dealing with, the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Department of Pesticides. The Department of Pesticides has authority to regulate and license and allow the sale of pesticides, and one of them is bottom paint. And they legally allow the paint. So once I put the paint in the boat, then I've got another state agency saying you're discharging something that is above our level, and thus you're in violation. So we've been trying to educate them, and there was a compromise in 2014 supposedly, and that's where the Department of Pesticides issued a new level of paint. Still has copper in it, but it's a much lower, lower level, that they say will still allow for the determinant of critters, yet not be at a level that costs us any kind of excess toxicity. But to date, the local regional board has not really acknowledged that. So we're really working with the chief staff there, their board members. We're also talking to various groups, and I know our Marine Association here has sent letters to the regional board, and there's probably letters going to the legislators soon, trying to educate them to try to get the regional board to take a more amenable stance on that. So that there is a concerted effort. We're also talking to our neighbor cities, just so you know, we're talking to San Diego and some of their harbors, Huntington Beach and stuff, saying, you know, we, we're, we're good to look at this as a whole. If you're going to regulate us, whatever you do, you need to regulate the whole state of California. It can't just be Newport Beach. And that's where they're focused now. They, they've kind of targeted, their first target was San Diego, and they did something down at Shelter Island there. And then they went to Belmont Shores, and there's a TMDL for copper paints there, and now Newport Beach. And, and we're kind of pushing the board to say, look, if it's such a problem, then it needs to be statewide, not one harbor.
Well, I'd just encourage you to develop a backup plan because if you're counting on logic to win over, I think you're kidding yourself. So I think we need to have a backup plan on what we're going to do and pretty much assume that they're going to, they're going to force this regulation on us. One of the areas I notice trash in the bay is, is, is on the, obviously on the prom, because I go down there all the time, on the Promontory Bay Channel where the Bayside Drive drain comes in. Do we have a CVS unit there?
I don't think that one has it. That's too low, right? We're, we just did carnation that drain, so we'd have to look at that one. That's coming off the slope above Irvine Terrace, right?
No, no, it's coming there off of Promontory Point Apartments, Bayside Restaurant, that whole area.
Not at this point.
Are you, are you planning to do one there? Is that in the plans? Because I saw on the slide, it said Bayside Drive, it didn't say where it was at.
Yeah. John, do you have any information on that?
No, I'm talking where the Promontory Bay Channel is. Yeah, because I, that's the one area I do notice, because we've got the riprap there, and so the tide comes up, and the stuff collects there, depending on the current and everything. The tide goes down, and it's all caught in the, in the rocks and stays there a long time before it gets cleaned up.
Yeah, we will look at that because we do have an improvement project on Bayside Drive coming up, and it'd be a good time to maybe put that in.
And then my last question is, when you're doing your, your periodic inspection of the, of the sewer system, what's the process for testing for leaks in the system? Particularly since we have so many old pipes that go back to the 1920s, 30s?
The primary process is video inspection, and what they do is they clean the sewer, and then they run a camera through it. And where there's leaks, you'll see the infiltration coming through. And if we find that, there's either point repairs we can do, if it's real bad, we can do a dig and replace. If the whole line looks like a lot of fractured tiles and infiltration, we'll actually line the whole pipe. And you've seen that, usually every year we do an annual sewer lining project, and that's what we're doing. We inspect the city, and we look for the various places we need to line, and we'll do one big project.
So what percentage of our system would you estimate today is leaking right now?
I wouldn't know. I, you know, I know we inspect it. Municipal Operations gives us a list of where they find there's issues, and I, I know we've really been taking that list down. It wasn't too long the last time I saw the list. I think we have a pretty good solid system, but, but there are still leaks. I can guarantee you, we have some out there leaking.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, it's median turf conversion.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and Dave, we're wondering if we have enough time for this because of closed session. I don't know how many people from the public wanted to comment on this.
Well, is it critical to give it today or can we wait till the 13th?
We, we could wait. What do you think, 10 minutes or? I, I think we have some decisions we'd like for me. we'd like from you. We're looking at plant selections and I know council usually likes to look at that. So, probably prefer not to rush that. Do you have time on Urban Avenue? We surely can come back on the 13th.
Why do, why do we come back? We, we have the presentation. We can look at it and digest it in between rather than just trying to react to it in a couple of minutes.
We'll be back. Thank you.
Okay, so, we'll take public comments now on study session item 13, which was the Sage High School presentation, the storm water quality presentation. Any public comments on that? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Public comments. This is the time, the city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay. Any public comments on agenda or non-agenda items? Please come forward.
Mike Glenn, resident of Balboa Peninsula. I sent an email earlier on, on, in regards to the bid on Balboa Peninsula for the Balboa Theater. Just wanted to make sure everybody got that. Also, wanted to make sure that the closed session meeting with real property negotiators was for the city's side of that rather than for anybody bidding on the property itself. And, if you guys had any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Mr. City Attorney, do you have an announcement on closed session items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Solich. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss agenda items 4A through C, including meeting with city manager Dave Kiff and interim assistant city manager Carol Jacobs, discuss labor negotiations with all represented employees, meeting with real property negotiators Dave Kiff, Simone Jurgis and Lauren Woodding to get direction as to the price in terms of payment related to the Balboa Theater with five groups set forth in the agenda. And, finally, meeting with legal counsel to discuss the litigation cases entitled Ronald Chomp versus Newport Mesa Unified School District and Paulette Calais versus City of Newport Beach. The matter entitled Woody's Group Inc. versus City of Newport Beach will be considered at the October 13th city council. Thank you.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session.